Good afternoon. It seems like we can't move forward because that hearing has ended. Good afternoon. I'm Councilman Robert Stokes, Chairman of Education, Workforce, and Youth Committee. Our committee members who are in attendance is Councilman Bullock from the Ninth District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Cohen from the First District.
Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Porter from the Tenth District.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair.
Vice Chair, Vice President Milton has excused absent. Real quick, Councilman Cohen has a scheduled, have a scheduled other commitment at 5:30. So if you see him drop off, that's the reason why. So I also want to mention that Daria Brown from President Mosley's office will be attending from the President's office. Also, the committee staff person is Marguerite Kern. I don't, Councilman Torrance, a member of the committee from the Seventh District also is in attendance. And Nina Thimler from the Mayor's Office. This is an oversight hearing at the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. Representatives from the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund will come before the committee to give an update on the status and or activities associated with this fund. I don't know if Council President is on here, no he's not. So we just will move forward and if Council President want to get on, he can give some remarks or questions. I want to turn the hearing over to Davon Love and he can present any of his colleagues or staff persons. So we can, he can do his presentation and remarks. Thank you.
All right. Good evening, Committee Chair, Committee Staff, and General Public. I'm Davon Love, I'm Community Engagement Lead for the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. I'll be the person representing the Youth Fund this evening and providing an update to the council and the public on the activities of the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. What I'm going to do is provide a brief update. There's a slide that, that I've been informed that you all have received and that's going to be the basis of my presentation this evening. It'll, you know, it'll be just a presentation about some of the, just an update of activities of BCYF. And then I'm also going to provide some answers to written questions that were addressed to the Youth Fund as well. And then, you know, of course, just take any questions from, from the committee. So if we can start.
Real quick, Mr. Love, I just want to recognize Nikki Thompson from President Mosley's office also. You can proceed. Thank you.
Yes, sir. All right. So if we can go to Slide Four. All right. So as I stated at the top, just want to give just some, in terms of updating the activity of the Youth Fund, want to talk about some of the major goals that the Youth Fund is tackling, that it has been tackling over the past several months. So the last hearing was in April and during that period of time, we were in the, in the process of transitioning out of a period where we had a grantee cohort. And so we were transitioning and being able to be more proactive in building the infrastructure of the institution. So there are four goals mentioned here in developing the institutional infrastructure, right? So the policies, procedures, like really being able to build out the infrastructure necessary to be an effective container for the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. Second is building out the board procedures and infrastructure. One of the things that's important about the board structure of the Youth Fund is that the intention is that a variety of folks that represent a cross-section of the community of Baltimore City are able to participate and able to exercise power over the nature of this kind of fund. And so making sure that there's a combination of public accountability and intergenerational leadership. And so that is an essential feature of the board as well, and I actually talk more about that later on. Setting a clear vision for grant-making and technical assistance. So there were a lot of lessons learned by the first grantee cohort of BCYF and the nature of the technical assistance provided. So being able to be proactive about setting a vision for that. And then fourth, developing a shared learning community. So making sure that in our evaluation of our work, that we're able to use that evaluation to cultivate a learning community that can hopefully help to bolster, bolster the entire sector. So those, and so those, that's not exclusively what BCYF is doing, but these are the, are the major priorities that the Youth Fund has been working on. So it's the last time I was before you all. Next slide. And actually, go to the next slide. All right. So systems and framework. So anyone who's built a startup institution knows that you have to set up a series of frameworks that govern the activity of the institution. And so there are a variety of things that, the list here that you see on the screen are a list of the frameworks, strategies that have been structured, but oh God, the activity of the Youth Fund moving forward. So for instance, we have an evaluation framework rooted in racial equity that among other things, frames the metrics that are used to determine success based on community impact instead of many of the traditional top-down metrics that are often handed down to nonprofit and community organizations. An evaluation that looks at community impact as the basis for developing metrics. Again, among other things that this internal racial equity-based evaluation framework the Youth Fund has adopted, an approach to youth development, so a youth development philosophy and framework. Part of that framework includes dealing with young people as members of a larger community as opposed to them merely just being isolated individuals. You know, a lot of the traditional approaches to youth development see the communities those young people come from as pathological and therefore frame success as their distance from their communities. We have adopted a development framework that understands the importance of community empowerment as an essential element to be empowered by a young person, right? And so that's a part of both the pedagogy and approach to youth development. That's part of the guiding framework for BCYF. And then as you see on the screen, just a variety of other, you know, hiring and benefits management systems, financial management systems, communication infrastructures. Those are some of the systems and frameworks that have been set up that again will guide, you know, the institution and the work that it'll carry out. All right, next slide. Uh, next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. All right. So Transition Board. So the ordinance that passed back in 2020 authorized a 18-month transition period. This transition period, in that ordinance, it listed eight people who served as the Transition Board members. And a part of their responsibility was both to help in the process of, of firming up and preparing the institution to continue.
Mr. Love, I'm sorry. I'm going to cut you off. We have to get Charm City to recess about five minutes so we can be recording. So they just reached out. So if you can give them about five minutes.
Yes, sir.
Finish your presentation.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. So we're going to be recessing for five minutes. Thank you, everybody. We can now start, but since we have Charm TV back on, I'm going to just read that this is a legislative oversight hearing for the Baltimore City Youth, Children Youth, Cities Children and Youth Fund. Representatives from the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund will come before the committee, get an update on the status and or activities associated with the fund. Real quick, committee members, I just want to let you know there were seven questions that were actually sent to Mr. Love and he's going to read the questions and actually give the answers to those questions. So, Mr. Love, if you want to start your presentation again, I guess if you got time, let's just finish where you start, where you, we stopped. And then you can go into the questions that were actually just, that were sent to you in advance.
Yes, sir. All right. So Transition Board. So there was an 18-month period in the ordinance that was passed in 2020 that named Transition Board Members and tasked with the responsibility of doing the work to usher the permanent Youth Fund structure, you know, to a more stable and firm infrastructure, which includes helping to develop and cultivate the bylaws, helping to establish internal procedures, and also helping in the process of on-ceding the first permanent board. There was a series of information sessions that were open to the public in October. There were three meetings, interest meetings where people were interested in serving the board on the permanent board were able to participate and learn about all the aspects of the Youth Fund necessary to, to serve on the board. There was a process by which the Transition Board along with the team engaged in a process of being able to take the thirty or some odd applicants and be able to select the board members that would be seated on the first permanent board. Those members will go before the City Council before the year is over in completion of the statutory requirement of the Transition Board coming before the City Council for the public to be able to publicly engage them. Next slide. Next slide. So what we've done, and so this actually addresses the question, and I hope this is okay, Chairman. This addresses the question around making sure that youth are integrated into the process of decision-making and youth service on the board. So the Avis Ransom Institute was established as for, for two primary reasons. The first, to be able to fulfill the requirement, the statutory requirement that a third of the board members of the Youth Fund are youths, which according to the ordinance are ages between fifteen to twenty-four, I believe. And so this would serve as the training ground to make sure that youth that serve on the board have the training that they need to fully participate in the level of decision-making that a board member would need in order to be effective. Additionally, we hope that the Avis Ransom Institute, named after the late Avis Ransom, was a community organizer, she was a mentor of mine and many others in the community organizing space, also served as a clearinghouse, a container for being able to train up young people to serve in other major civic capacities as well. So we intend on the Avis Ransom Institute being the container by which young people are trained, by which young people are being able to be placed in decision-making capacities so that they're collaborating with the adults in the, in the institution, living up to the intergenerational leadership value that's a part of the founding values of the Baltimore City Children Youth Fund. We actually started in October. We actually had a, there was actually a meeting today with the young people in the program. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. All right. So in terms of the future of grant-making for the Youth Fund, there are four major categories of direct funding to, to programs. So one category will be a grassroots fund. So this is a fund that really intends to make sure that it funds organizations led, you know, by young people, by people of color, by community organizations, and to provide the deep technical assistance that is needed. You know, too often we have folks in the community that do good work, but may not necessarily have all the administrative infrastructure. And so the purpose really of this fund is to provide that deep level of technical assistance in addition to multi-year grants, because a lot of organizations, in addition to getting funding and developing the ability to be, to develop sustainable revenue streams. So they're not dependent on one general source of, of funding. And so really, again, the purpose of this is to address the needs that many grassroots, community-based organizations have around sustainable funding and also incentivizing partnerships as a part of the grassroots fund. Next slide. Innovation Fund. So many, so oftentimes particularly black folks and other folks of color when it comes to access to capital, aren't given the opportunity to innovate. You know, there's so much pressure, there's a kind of a compliance-centric approach to providing funds that it discourages innovation. So we wanted to provide an opportunity for folks to get access to resources, to engage in the kind of innovation that's necessary to finding solutions to many of the problems that we have. And so being able to invest, again, in grassroots organizations and others in their ability to be innovative and addressing many of the issues in our community. So that, so that's the innovation, Innovation Fund. Next slide. The next is aligned grant-making and partnerships. So one of the things that is important at BCYF is that we look at the larger issue of serving young people as a question of having and developing an ecosystem, right? So it's not just a matter of what BCYF is doing as an individual institution, but being able to have an awareness of the larger ecosystem and engage both in partnerships, which, which would include co-investment and certain initiatives, as well as helping to invest in initiatives that help to cultivate and build the ecosystem of grant-making institutions in order to encourage more collaboration, to encourage more connectivity and connection as it relates to those that are engaged in a larger space of serving young people. An example of this, for instance, is that BCYF engaged in a partnership with the Baltimore City Funding Collaborative, or the Summer Funding Collaborative, which funds organizations to do summer programming, invested in fusion partnerships with, to build their capacity, knowing that there's a need for fiscal sponsorship and given that there's such a weak fiscal sponsorship landscape. So an investment in fusion is one first step to larger investments in other fiscal sponsorship entities, particularly community-based fiscal sponsorship entities. So again, that is a first step to thinking about building that fiscal sponsor ecosystem. And B-City, which is a program in West Baltimore that addresses youth trauma and also provides sub-grants to community-based organizations as well. So that's an example of BCYF using this approach of aligned grant-making and that'll continue in its permanent structure. Next slide. So President, President's Fund, as is typical with many foundations, is certain. In this case, five percent of the funds will be discretionary of the President to be able to spend in ways that align with the mission, vision, values of Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund. Next slide. Technical assistance. So for every four dollars that are awarded in the grant and direct funding, one dollar will be spent in technical assistance. We think that's, we think that's vitally important. Technical assistance, if we're serious in the issue of racial equity and thinking about the disparities between black folks and the people of colors' access to resources, you know, a lot of it has to do with, again, the infrastructure that the institution has to receive those dollars and, and many of the other factors as well. So the technical assistance is to provide the community, the, the basis it needs to be able to receive dollars that such as the Youth Fund will provide. We want to also make sure that in providing technical assistance, it's not just grantees of the Baltimore City Children and Youth Fund, but the community at large. And we've actually provided some, over, over the past several months, we provided some community-based technical assistance, which included partnerships with the Black Mental Health Alliance, initiatives related to, to mental health, partnerships to talk about fiscal sponsorship. We actually just ended a youth development series in helping practitioners with their approaches to youth development, which culminated in a youth development conference that was spearheaded by Malin Mentor and the Strategic Resources Group. And we're actually about to do a partnership for technical assistance for youth violence prevention series. So these are the kinds of technical assistance that would be made available, not just to grantees, but to the general public, Youth Fund serving its role as a community resource. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. So as I mentioned before, in terms of cultural learning, one of the things that is in the ordinance that establishes the Youth Fund is that every three years is the requirement to, to do a needs assessment. And so that's a part of the institution, making sure that it's staying abreast of what the community needs and some of the things that are going to be important for the community. In terms of assessing where resources go, I talked about an internal evaluation framework that BCYF has adopted, along with many other internal reports that'll be consistently used as a way to institute a culture of learning. You know, one of the things really wanted to emphasize here, as I mentioned earlier, is that much of the work in the nonprofit sector is very compliance-centric, much of it in, in framed in very punitive contexts. We want to encourage a culture of learning so that we can look at the mistakes that we've made, institutions who look at the mistakes that they've made and cultivate an environment of learning from it. Because we think that that just serves the youth better to be able to develop that culture of learning. Next slide. So in terms of case-making, so one of the things that, you know, has been something that we've addressed a lot is, you know, what is it that we want, what is it that we believe makes the Youth Fund different? The four points on this slide, we think are the cases, the statements that the Youth Fund is making to the larger philanthropic sector that we think the Youth Fund is uniquely positioned to advance. So for instance, the need to develop an ecosystem of community-based organizations and infrastructure to support that work, that we think that the Youth Fund is going to be an important asset to helping to spearhead the development of a larger ecosystem, particularly an ecosystem that is community-based so that there's more coordinated efforts around youth service delivery. The second is that there are certain methodologies of youth service that often are marginalized from the mainstream. You know, oftentimes, I mean, this is, you know, this isn't casting any dispersion at these institutions per se, but if you think about many of the major institutions like a Johns Hopkins or like University of Maryland, those are institutions that often dominate and drive what's considered best practice in certain issues around youth service. We hope that the Youth Fund can serve the role of making it so that the community, those who have certain practices that aren't in those networks, are being able to be able to be lifted up and considered for best practice to expand the kinds of approaches to youth service that can actually have an impact in the community. The third case is that oftentimes questions of having black leadership is often rendered in kind of mere moral terms. Like it's just good to have black people lead things in majority of black spaces. But we argue that actually having black folks, particularly black folks ever from the community, leading many of the major aspects of the industries that serve youth actually makes those industries more effective. Because these are folks that tend to be more immersed in the needs and conditions of the community in a way to be most responsive to it. And then this last piece is just in terms of knowledge production. There are bodies of knowledge outside of the major academic institutions that have important things to say about how to address youth. And so the Youth Fund wants to play the role of helping to provide resources, a platform to those bodies of knowledge that have thought very rigorously about serving youth. We want to provide those institutions with resources and a platform as well. Next slide. Next slide. Next slide. I actually think that's the end. So that's the end of the, of the presentation. So now I'm going to address the questions that were sent to us. So I already addressed.
Davon, before you start, let me, let me acknowledge Matt Steppen from President Mosley's office and Councilwoman Odette Ramos from the Fourteenth District. Also, I want to mention that Councilman Glover is not, he excused absent. He had death in the family. So I just, I didn't say that. I want to make sure that's on record.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Love, the answers that you have, can you, any way you can send them out even though you have them in front of you? Why would you answer them? So we have them in front of us also, the committee members.
So I can do that. So I'll do, I'll do that tonight. I'll write up the answers. I'll send them over to you all tonight. So you have a written version of these answers.
Okay. Thank you. You can proceed.
So I addressed the youth one because it happened to be in the presentation. So the first question was around transparency, how to ensure that the Youth Fund is able to be as transparent as possible. So in the, in the crafting of the ordinance that authorized the independence of the Youth Fund, there was a really intentional effort to make sure there were pathways of public transparency, which include a requirement in the ordinance to come in front of the council every March for a public hearing to assess the activities of the Youth Fund. An annual public hearing that the Youth Fund would have to conduct, that we did conduct this past year to authorize the, to finalize the financial plan in terms of where the resources are going to be spent for that coming year. The board mem, the board meetings that are bi-monthly are public and available to the public and that the agenda is available on the BCYF website. The board members are required to come before the council, which also provides an additional opportunity for the public to engage the Youth Fund in its decision-making capacity and is subject to all the Open Meetings Act and Public Information Act requirements. And we have seen, and we have received several Public Information Act requests and Open Meetings Act requests. And so on this front, you know, we believe the BCYF and all those different mechanisms of, of public engagement is exercising a tremendous amount of transparency. All right. So on the.
Mr. Davon, are you, are you going to the next question?
Yes, sir.
Let, let me do this. Let me ask the question and then you can give us the answer.
Yes, sir.
So the second is, in the last oversight hearing, BCYF stated that thirty-five point nine percent of the two-year guarantees rely on BCYF funding for fifty percent to a hundred percent of their operating budget. What assistance has been provided to grantees to ensure that they are sustainable? What are their operating budgets? What has been provided to ensure they are, okay, I'm probably said it. What supports, what supports are you offering to grantees to ensure that they are not solely relying on BCF to remain solvent?
So.
Answer that.
Yes, sir. So the, so the grantee, so, so it's important for the public to know that the Youth Fund had a cohort of grantees for two years. That two-year grantee cohort has since sunset. The, the purpose of the cohort being two years was to address many of the things in which that question refers to. So as it relates to sustainability, there was technical assistance provided to each grantee that addressed a variety of its concerns, including financial sustainability. Now, while many of the grantees of which have now sunset in terms of their grantee relationship with the Youth Fund, you know, many of them, you know, are struggling with the issue of figuring out how to sustain themselves beyond the funding that was provided for the Youth Fund. That is something the Youth Fund is going to continue to provide assistance with. The Youth Fund provided a series of technical assistance that were both made available to the grantees and the public around economic sustainability. And that in the future, the grants that would be provided to organizations, as was mentioned in the presentation with the Grassroots Fund and many of the other categories of funding will require multi-year investments with, again, deep technical assistance that will allow organizations to be able to think about and plan for a financial sustainability plan that considers the variety of other revenue streams necessary, necessary to be sustainable. Last thing I'll add on this question is, is that this is actually a problem, not just with the Youth Fund, but a problem with organizations at large in the larger nonprofit ecosystem that many of the organizations that receive philanthropic dollars or dollars from foundations often are not encouraged to think about the issue of financial sustainability and are not often provided with the kinds of supports. So we actually believe one of the things that makes the Youth Fund unique is that we can help spearhead the conversation around making sure that community-based organizations have the infrastructure, technical assistance to meaningfully address the issue of financial sustainability.
Thank you. The next question, are you providing assistance to grantees to apply for the city's opera funds through the Mayor's Office of Recovery Programs? If so, are you connecting them with larger organizations to submit proposals?
So as I've mentioned, the grantee cohort that I referred to earlier, that relationship has sunset. So the Youth Fund currently does not have grantees. BCYF has reached out to the administration to offer help and support in the process of helping organizations to apply. So we're currently in the process of, we've reached out to the administration and are waiting a time to meet to figure out in what ways can BCYF can be helpful in that regard.
Okay. Next question. What processes have BCYF developed to integrate youth into leadership?
So that question and the question after that around the youth, I addressed with the Avis Ransom Institute. So the Avis Ransom Institute is going to be a container that we use to fulfill our obligations statutorily that a third of the board of the Youth Fund are youth ages fifteen to, I think about twenty-four, twenty-five. And so the Avis Ransom Institute will both serve as a container for onboarding young people onto the board as well as providing a overall container for preparing young people for high levels of civic engagement. And that also will be the container by which will be used to incorporate the ideas and input of young people into the institution at large.
The next one, what's the plan for transitioning and onboarding BCYF Permanent Board of Directors and President?
So, and actually, yeah, I actually meant to mention the President piece earlier. So we're in the final stages of actually hiring BCYF's first president. There's been a release for job announcements for vice president positions. In terms of onboarding the board, so as I mentioned, there were three public sessions in public interest meetings for folks interested in serving on the board. And in terms of the process of onboarding members, we actually have some of the Transition Board members who are also going to be staggered and serving about a year on the seating of the permanent board for institutional. On the seating of the permanent board for institutional continuity. But also for the purpose of being able to onboard new board members with the institutional knowledge that they'll need to be able to advance the work of the youth fund. Um, and in terms of like some of the particular, um, you know, curriculum and framework for onboarding, um, the new board members. Um, that's something that we're still in the process of of developing. Um, you know, the youth fund is something that's a very unique experience for the transition board members. Um, and we believe that the lessons learned by the folks on the transition board. Um, not only will be an important lesson for the new board members that are going to be onboarded. But an important lesson, I think, for other, um, nonprofit entities looking to embed racial equity in their practice.
Uh, thank you. And the last question, real quick, after the last question, um, Mr. Dave Vaughn. Um, the committee looks forward to receiving those responses in writing. Last question. What the permanent processes, systems and procedures for grant making, make grant making based on lessons learned from the initial cohort. Uh, grantees will be implemented before the spring of two thousand twenty-two application opens.
So, um, so a few things, um, I mentioned before the different category of funding. Um, that'll help to produce smaller portfolios. One of the greatest, I, I would maybe potentially the greatest challenge, um, to the youth fund. Um, just given the level of urgency when the initial decisions were made in two thousand eighteen about the first round of dollars. There was a desire to make sure that as much money went out as possible, and that resulted in a tremendously large grantee cohort. So one of the lessons that this learned, um, that we learned and that will be integrated into the two thousand twenty-two, um, direct grant making. Um, is smaller portfolios that suck up much less of the administrative infrastructure needed to make sure. Um, the institution can function, um, making sure that there are, uh, program officers. So being able to have the infrastructure, they have program officers that can tend, um, to the variety of needs to grantees outside of just the. Technical assistance, which was the primary contact, um, that the grantees had, um. With the, with the youth fund, was from T A, but also have a program office to deal with some of the other needs. Um, internal review of the grant review process. So we had a grant review process in the initial, um, under the Associated Black Charities, there was a grant review process. But one of the things, lessons learned is to have a written review, um, internal review of the grant review process. Such that it's available to the public to be able to scrutinize and be able to serve as, uh, that culture of learning that I talked about earlier. Uh, providing technical assistance prior to grant agreements. So we did provide technical assistance in a series of technical assistance, assistance sessions. To people who were applying for the youth fund in two thousand eighteen. Uh, but one of the lessons we learned is that there's even technical assistance needed in getting a person who has been rewarded a grant. Getting them from the reward process even to establishing an agreement. So providing additional technical assistance in that, um, part of the process. Um, and then quite frankly, just less surprises. You know, we were both flying a plane while building it. Um, and so being, being that we're in a, in a state now, we're able to be more established in terms of the policies and procedures and expectations of grantees. Um, this will just provide kind of a more, um, stable ability to be able to inform grantees of the information they need. And being able to make sure that the grantees are formed of all the requirements of them, um, in ways that work, uh, for both parties. Um, so those are just some of the kind of big picture, um, lessons learned, um, that'll be incorporated into the two thousand twenty-two RFP.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Love. So I'm gonna start with the committee members. So real quick, I'm gonna start with Councilwoman Porter from the tenth district. And I just want to say to all the committee members, if you have additional questions, you can ask them. But if you have follow-up questions from the questions Mr. Dave Vaughn just asked, you can also do the answer. You can also do that also.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you so much for your presentation, um, Mr. Love. I don't have any additional questions. Thank you.
Okay, uh, Councilman Bullock from the ninth district.
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for arranging the hearing. I just want to say, uh, Mr. Love, I really appreciate the work you did. Um, very thorough in terms of not only including young people, but thinking about the strategy moving forward. You know, all those questions are really essential to what we're trying to do in the city, trying to empower young people, but also create sustainable organizations. So that, that, that process is something I think, um, folks should be paying attention to. So I'm glad you're able to provide that kind of clarity to answer the questions that the committee members had and should the public has as well. So again, thank you for that hard work. We know it wasn't easy, um, really doing this live, but very much appreciated.
Thank you, Councilman. Um, Councilman Torrance from the seventh district.
Golly, from the ninth district sentiment, but also.
I hear you. He muted. He's muted, something. Um, okay. Try it now, Councilman, can you? Little bit. So what we do, we'll come back to you, um, Councilman. Um, we are going to take some public testimony and I'm gonna just read what's required. Um, for those who sign and use a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate you wish to testify. We will start with you. Next, we will go through all the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who call and cannot be identified by name and will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one. You will hear two beeps when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the beginning of the testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, they simply need to say they don't want to provide testimony after two beeps. If the, any speaker is inaudible, they will, they will be directed to call back. So, um. Ms. Current, are there any, is there any callers for a public testimony?
Mr. Chair, no one raised their hand, but we do have, uh, one call in user and I'm unmuting that call in user now. Do you wish to testify?
No, no, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
So there's no other.
Nope, no public testimony, sir.
Okay, we'll go back to Councilman Torrance. James Torrance from the seventh district, see if we, his, um, internet is working. Okay, so. That concludes the public testimony. Um, I want to thank everybody for attending the hearing. And this hearing has been recessed and Mr. Dave Vaughn, thank you for your presentation. And we look forward to those, uh, questions, I mean, the answers to the questions that we asked you here on the hearing. Thanks a lot. Have a great evening.
Thank you. Good night.